I'll call the meeting to order. I'd like to congratulate or give our condolences to Tom Hodge, Jerry Roddy, and Clifford Walker as they've been reappointed for another four years. And welcome, Commissioner Ron French, as he is replacing Monica on the Planning Commission. Hope everybody had a good turkey day. Before I jump in, I better read the exit procedures. "In the event of an emergency evacuation, an alarm will sound. Everyone should exit the building by way of the nearest stairwell in a safe and effective manner. If the nearest stairwell is blocked by smoke, use the other stairwell. Do not use the elevator. Once you have reached the main floor, follow the exit signs to exit the building and quickly proceed away from the building. Please be mindful of others evacuating and of emergency vehicles." You have the minutes. We're in the packet. Actually, the minutes from September 27th, as we did not have a meeting in October. Any additions, corrections?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? A second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, like sign. Minutes are approved. Public hearings. Roger.
Yes, it would be the public hearing for the rezoning at 6250 Paul Boone Road.
Is there anybody here that wishes to speak to the rezoning request for the rezoning from R2 to Rural District 1 at 6250 Paul Boone Road? If there are no one to speak, a public hearing is closed. Roger, you want to cover the details?
This rezoning request is for a portion of the property at 6250 Paul Boone Road to be rezoned to R1 from its current classification of R2. The property is identified on Tax Map 126 and Parcel 79. The rezoning would be for approximately the southern two-thirds of the property, which comes out to approximately 31 acres of the 41-acre tract. The property that abuts this along the western and southern borders is currently R1, so this rezoning would be a continuation of the R1 zone. Based on the site visit and slope analysis, the average slope of these 31 acres is less than 30 percent, which normally defines the R2 zone. The primary differences between R1 and R2 are density and minimum lot size. The R2 has an overall density of one dwelling per five acres versus 1.2 dwelling units per acre in the R1 zone. And the minimum lot size in the R2 zone is five acres versus 30,000 square feet in the R1 zone. The applicant is primarily interested in the benefit from the smaller lot size if there's a rezoning approved. And I included a map there that has the 40-foot contour intervals from the TVA quad map. And then the second map reflects the proposed changes to the zoning map.
We have any questions or comments?
Chairman?
Yes.
Just ask Roger, does the property actually have frontage on Paul Boone Road?
Paul Boone Road actually dead ends into this property.
Paul Boone is a public road?
It's...I believe it's public so far back, and then it turns into private into this property.
That's correct.
But it's public up to the property?
Any other questions or comments?
Is it an individual or an individual?
It's an individual.
Do I have a motion? Now, the motion, the appropriate motion would be to recommend for the rezoning and to send it on to the County Commission for Public Hearing. We have a motion. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the election of officers. As John was looking back at the past year, he realized that we never had elections last year. So, the officers that we had the previous, for the previous year just carried forward. It would be in order for us, before we go into election of officers for this next year, for us to at least put in the record an affirmation and recognition of the officers that continued their service last year. That was myself as chairman, David Caldwell as vice chair, and Doug and John as secretaries. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, Bruce, and second, Commissioner Kirby. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries, or the confirmation of officers is affirmed. We need to elect officers going into the next year. We have a position of chairman, vice chair, and secretary. Do I have any nominations from the floor?
I have a nomination. Motion to adjourn now for position.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to retain officers as they stand. If there are no further nominations, nominations are closed. All those in favor of reaffirming the officers as they currently stand signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The officers are confirmed. Hearings, site plans, excuse me. Expansion of existing non-conforming use at 116 or circled. Roger?
That property is identified on Tax Map 46, Parcel 59. The zoning classification is suburbanizing. The property houses the existing manufacturing business as well as a manufactured home park and is located on Middle Settlement Road just outside the city limits of Maryville. The proposed expansion is for a 45-by-75-feet addition with a 15-by-25-feet office spaced on the front of that expansion. In February, a similar expansion was approved at this site. This expansion will extend that 45-by-75 expansion out through the front of the existing building. The office will be located at the front of this new expansion. The site plan shows that all building setback requirements will be met by this addition. Drainage calculations are not required for the site plan based on minimum increase of impervious surface, which is 0.8 percent. Septic area is not a concern due to the property being serviced by city sewer. And this addition will not affect parking at this location.
Thank you, Roger. Any questions or comments of Roger? Commissioner Kirby.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last spring or February, whenever, we approved addition to this building already, I make a motion, we accept.
We have a motion and a second to approve the second increase in the site plan. Any questions, comments, discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Site plan is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Preliminary Platts, major subdivisions, Lot 151, 152, and 153 of Panorama Estates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a lot of items tonight, so I'll try to move through them concisely when I read the outstanding items to be completed. If they've been completed, I'll report that, but I'm going to read it anyway to read it into the record. The first item as mentioned is a preliminary and final plat, major subdivision for lots 151, 152, and 153 of Panorama Estates, Unit 7, off of Dakota Drive by Jim Gregory. There are three lots. One of the lots is a flag lot, and two of the lots are served by a common driveway easement, as you can see on the plat. Lot 153 is actually the flag lot that goes down to the end of Dakota Drive, which is a turnaround that was just completed on the Dakota Drive road plat that I believe you approved as a final plat last month or the month before. The outstanding items to be completed begin on page three. Number one, the project engineer shall certify that the three lots will be accommodated for in the drainage engineering and drainage facilities for the previous plat. I do not have that information at this time. Number two, the project engineer shall certify in writing whether a SWIP permit is required for the subdivision. All erosion controls are in place and shall be inspected by the stormwater coordinator and maintained by the owner until vegetation has been established on all exposed areas along the driveway easement. I'd like to report erosion controls are in place, but vegetation is not. Those are different things. So, we'll monitor that over time. It's a relatively steep slope, and the owner's been really good about fixing it the last few times, so I don't anticipate that being any problem. Number three, a maintenance agreement for lots 151, 152, and 153 shall be supplied to staff prior to releasing the final plat. I believe Jim's getting that worked on now, and the signature plats and a $20 per-lot platting fee. I want to remind you again, this is a preliminary and final plat, so if you approve the final plat, it'll be subject to him finishing those items, and we'll hold the plat and sign it after that time.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Motion to approve. You get the motion in a second. Any questions? All those in favor of approving the preliminary and the final plat, subject to completion of the outstanding items, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Griffiths Mill at Chota Road by Capital Bank.
This is a preliminary and final plat, but we're going to take it in two steps. Item two is going to be the preliminary plat for Griffiths Mill at Mint Road off Chota by Capital Bank, 138 lots on 166 acres to be served by proposed new county roads. Before I get to the outstanding items to be completed, which will be on page eight, I'll just give you a little bit of background, and I'll just read it straight from the recommendation. The concept plan was reviewed by the Planning Commission at the April 2005 regular meeting. The preliminary plat for Griffiths Mill was approved at the September 2005 regular meeting. The preliminary is extended at September 2006 meeting for an additional year. During that timeframe, the original owner completed the bulk of the infrastructure, including roads, drainage facilities, and utilities, except for all of the sewer system. Ownership has since changed, and the current owner is now Capital Bank. The property is now under contract with a new prospective developer, who is authorized by the bank to resubmit the plat with the original design, density, road layout, and infrastructure for preliminary consideration. For some of you who haven't been on the Planning Commission, there's a couple of unique items that you may want to pay attention to on this preliminary plat. One is that it's considered a cluster development, and it has different requirements for lot sizes and so forth. Another thing that's unique of the property is that the original developer decided to put this on what we call an onsite sewer system, which this Planning Commission is allowed to approve, plats under the subdivision regulations, provided that that sewer system is managed by a state-operated or state-approved management company. Those do exist, and that is the intent here. A third unique feature of this proposed development is you'll see a boulevard road and a lot of open space. So, it's a little bit different than a standard subdivision, but some of the things have changed from the overall design from 2005 on the final plat. The overall preliminary plat that you're looking at here is essentially the same as we saw in 2005. And I know that sounds like a contradiction. The current owner, Capital Bank, intends to take out some of the amenities that the original owner was going to put in, like clubhouses and swimming pools and walking trails, simply because of economics. The outstanding items to be completed on page eight. Number one, supply legal documentation regarding the management and operation of the onsite sewer system, inclusive of which utility provider is going to operate the system and ownership of the sewer facilities. We have that information on file now. I'm not sure if we have signed original copies, but that has been largely taken care of. What is the name of the ownership company? Is it the Pickney Brothers, or what do they operate as now?
Tennessee Wastewater.
Tennessee Wastewater will be the owner, and they are state-licensed and approved. Number two, all drainage pipes and basins shall be inspected and approved for final plat since this project is set for a few years unattended. Any deficiencies shall be corrected by the new owner prior to releasing the final plat. As I understand, we didn't find any deficiencies in the pipes. There was one of the drainage, what did you call it, a cap? What was that?
Overflow.
The grate, overflow grate was missing. Jason's ordered that. It's supposed to be here tomorrow, so I don't think that's any issue. Number three, all roads, drainage, and detention facilities must be certified as being built in accordance with the project engineering, road, and drainage plans and specifications prior to final plat certification. I know this is preliminary plat, but I will report that I just have received a letter from the engineer who did the original plan in 2005 and '06, David Campbell. He was with the Campbell Company at the time, but he's now with Ideal Engineering. He has been to the site over the years, and he has certified that it's built according to those original plans. Number four, the developer shall supply a copy of a property owners' association to include all of the lots in Phase 1 for the maintenance of all common elements, including drainage facilities and open space. I've received that document today from the title company. Looks to be in order, but there might be some tweaks that have to go on, and we can handle that between myself and the staff of the title company. Number five, road signage and painting along Chota Road and internal striping of the roads, which is essentially the boulevards, they need to be striped and have directional signs so people go in the right way, shall be completed prior to releasing the Phase 1 final plat. Keep in mind that we're looking at the preliminary plat here. The road painting has been done along Chota Road to the satisfaction of the Highway Department. The internal road striping has been done to the satisfaction of the Highway Department. Road signs are currently being ordered, or have been ordered. They're just not in place yet. Those are the five items for preliminary plat considerations.
All right, the request is for a preliminary plat, which will make this reactivated as an active subdivision.
And it would be for 24 months.
For 24 months, so. Any questions?
Yeah.
Commissioner McClellan?
Go ahead.
Go ahead there. I'm going to make a motion.
Oh, a quick question about the private sewer. How many of those do we have in the county offhand that would have a private sewer facility, I guess you would call it? Is that relatively prevalent?
I can't tell you exactly how many we have. We have one at Tall Oaks Community. That's off of Pea Ridge Road. We have one at...
Windsong.
Windsong has one. We have one...
Kensington Springs.
Kensington's got one.
Jackson Bean.
Yeah, and these are not uncommon for some of the older schools that you have in the county. They have more of a package plant.
Townsend, yeah.
Right.
Madison, yeah, Prospect, yeah.
Yeah, this is a more modern version of what you used to have as a private sewer system.
Commissioner McClellan?
It's just good to see a builder that's going to start doing some building on this size, so I'll make a motion to approve preliminary.
And we have a second.
Subject to the staff's requirements.
We have a motion and a second. It was David. To approve the preliminary plat. All those in favor signify... Excuse me, Gerald.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Doing away with all the pools and buildings and type thing, according to the way I read back in there, are the lots going to increase in any size? Are we just going to have more green space? Or have the lots been drawed in that area that was done away with, that they eliminated?
Well, you've asked more than one question. They haven't reduced the lot size at all, even though they're allowed to make them even a little smaller. They left them the size that were prepared by the original developer in 2005. The intent is to fill in some of the green spaces with lots in the future, but the overall density will still meet the requirements. They're going to end up having more open space than space in lots.
My question is, are they going to come back and request those green spaces to be turned into lots?
Okay, once again, some of that will be in the front, because it simply has, the previous developer had it intended for walking trails and so forth. They have no intention to do that, so they're going to put some lots in those areas. However, they're going to make it up in the back of the property with open space. When you see the next phase, Phase 56, I mean, the 56 lot Phase 1, and I don't mean to get ahead, but I need to...
That's fine. I understand.
When we go to that next plat, you'll see open space that'll be commensurate with the amount that we require for 56 lots. When they go to full buildout at 138 lots in the future, they'll have commensurate open space. Otherwise, some of those areas that have been abandoned conceptually, like areas for clubhouses that they don't feel they can afford to put in and things, they just sit vacant otherwise.
If those areas wasn't filled in or lotted off, and you've got a bunch of people move in, buy lots, buy houses, and have a homeowners' association, would it be possible that those people might want to put in a pool? They might want to do something else if nothing else has been drawn in that area already. Could they purchase that part?
Well, let me say a few things. The homeowners' association as a whole will have control of the open space. What they do with it, for one, is really not the concern of the Planning Commission, what they do after the fact, because we don't require they put in a pool. If the developer decides to leave a caveat in there that the owners of the subdivision, when they reach a certain number, can put those amenities in, that would be completely up to him.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner McClellan, do you have another question? Any other questions or comments? Not, do I have, we have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat, subject to staff recommendations and items to be completed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Okay. You ready?
Go ahead.
Sorry. Item three is Griffiths Mill at Mint Road again off Chota Road, Phase 1, by Capital Bank, 56 lots on 51 acres to be served by proposed new county roads. And this is the final plat. If you want to turn to the plat, too, it's Item C3 and C4. C3 shows you kind of a close-up version of the Boulevard Road, and you'll notice that the Boulevard Road has median sections that are not going to be part of the road dedicated to the county. Those will remain part of the open space and maintained behind the curb by the lot owners, and we have done that before in Windsong subdivision. And that's simply because the Highway Department doesn't want to maintain those sections. If you'll turn to the second page, you'll see a greater view of the overall Phase 1, 56 lots with internal looping roads. You'll see where the roads intersect with the Boulevard. You'll see the main sewer section in the back of the, that's actually a drip field, that's the shaded area. And then if you'll look, there's a couple areas of designated open space. The outstanding items to be completed begin on page 11. There's going to be a little redundancy, but I have them written down, so I'd like to read them into the record. Number one, supply legal documentation regarding the management and operation of the onsite sewer system. Once again, we have that information, but I do believe I need a signed original. Number two, all drainage pipes and basins shall be inspected and approved for final plat since this project has set for a few years unattended. Any deficiencies shall be corrected by the new owner prior to releasing the final plat. Like I said, we have got the information from the engineer and the stormwater coordinator, and Jason, Mr. Pankratz here, has got the, what is that, creative?
Overflow grate ordered.
Number three, all road drainage and detention facilities must be certified as being built in accordance with the project engineering, road, and drainage plans. And I have that document I referred to from David Campbell. Number four, the developer shall supply a copy of the property owners' association documentation. And as I reported, we have that for Phase 1. It's not finalized, and we will work with the title company on that. Number five, the road signage and painting are the same as I reported before. All of the road painting has been done internally for Phase 1. I don't anticipate for any future phases, so all we're waiting for internally is for the road signs to be put up. Number six, final signature plats with certifications from all utilities, 911, and the Highway Department, and a $40 per-lot platting fee prior to final plat being signed by the secretary. The final signature plats are almost in order. 911 and the water and electric have signed the plat. The owner has signed the plat. Capital Bank, we're waiting for an actual signature from the sewer, and then the Highway Department will sign the plat and has agreed to sign the plat once the signs are put up and inspected, and then we'll be ready for final plat as well. So, they're right there. I just wanted to give you right up to date, minute where they're at, and we feel like they'll have this done in no time.
Second. All right, we have a motion to approve, subject to staff recommendations and outstanding items being completed. Any other questions? This is an approval of the preliminary as well as the final, subject to completion of items.
You already approved the preliminary.
That was in there.
This is...
I'm sorry.
Final Phase 1.
This is the final for the one we just, preliminary, included in the preliminary we just approved. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one final item tonight.
Gerald.
It's a miscellaneous item. Item E1, it starts on page 12. It's Lot 1, Ray and Annette Sparks' property off Sevierville Road by Ray and Annette Sparks. There's a variance request to the frontage along Sevierville Road. I'll just briefly describe it. If you'll look at the plat, this is right past the Sevierville Road and Hinkle Road intersection going towards Sevier County. This property be on the left, maybe 200 yards past that intersection. They've got, I think, what is it, like about 135 feet of road frontage? I have it actually written in here. 137 feet of road frontage. They want to divide off the house, which is existing, and the garages, and they want to keep the property in the back for future sale or division. They've done so with a 25-foot flag stem, which would allow them to put an easement on it and put up to three or four lots back there, depending on the size. They've got enough land possibly for four, four or five lots. In order to do so, though, they're reducing the road frontage on the lot that you see, numbered Lot 1. Our requirements require, what is it, 150 feet of road frontage on Sevierville Road. So, by taking the 25 feet off, they only leave themselves 112 feet of road frontage, which, that's where the variance request comes from. Does that make sense?
But the...
But they didn't have...
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
The existing driveway already uses that space, though.
Yes, and they intend to have it, they have any, I had them add an easement so they could continue to use it.
Right, okay.
It's kind of a loop.
Go ahead. You can continue.
Oh, all I was going to say is that they didn't have 150 feet to start with. They had 137, and they're dividing this for family reasons, so, you know, they could potentially plan for their future and their estate, and they're cutting this lot off in case they need to sell it, as I understand it. But anyway, that's the purpose and intent of the variance request.
Mr. Kirby?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The two lots prior, before you get to that, that's blotted off on our maps, was that originally... originally piece of this, was that original piece of this property, those two lots?
I don't know.
And you don't know how wide, how long they are in front?
Oh, they don't meet our standard.
They're not standard either, right?
No, they're not standard lots, but there are lots of records, so we didn't...
So was a hundred and fifty feet put in after or before? That's a state requirement, right? All right. That was put in and when?
It's been there for quite a while. It's the coast of the arterial.
Okay. And then these people have owned this property for a long, long time?
Yes, I understand it. Yes.
Okay. I make a motion, we give them a variance.
And...
And approve the plat.
We have a motion to approve the variance, which is really a technical addition of a right-of-way in a space that already exists, and approve the plat. Do I have a second? I have a second? Any questions or comments?
May I have one more item?
Sure.
Actually, two little things. I just wanted to let you know that I did speak to Gary Ferguson this evening. He has checked the smaller lot, make sure that everything works. There are a lot of buildings there, but he said there's plenty of room in the back and that it will work. And the second item is, I did consult with Roger, so there won't be any BZA, they don't have to go to the BZA for any additional variances. If you approve the variance and the plat, then once it comes in, we can sign it.
Okay. We've, I've got a second. Thank you. Commissioner McClellan, did you have a question? Tom?
Just to clarify, I'm kind of confusing myself. If you have a hundred and fifty feet is your minimum, but you're creating a flag of twenty-five, would, are you saying, would the flag is exempt from the hundred and fifty? Am I thinking correctly?
We're just having you basically grant the variance to accept the plat the way it is. The twenty-five-foot lot off the flag could exist.
Okay.
So the variance really only applies to the...
The flag's not a problem either way, you're saying. It's the hundred and fifty.
The hundred and fifty minimum lot size.
Where do we get back to the minimum distance between flags? I think we've had this conversation in the past. We've, you know, the, do you understand where I'm going with this?
Yeah, that doesn't apply here. You can have flag lots on a minor arterial and collector roads. You can't have it on a major arterial or primary arterial road. We don't allow those. So the flag lot is allowed. Flag lot is twenty-five-foot, you know, wide corridor.
Do we also have a minimum distance between the flags?
Yes.
What is that amount?
What is that?
I know we've had that, it's sometime in the past, our members...
It's actually a hundred and fifty feet. I'm with you.
Any other questions? Commissioner French?
I guess, is that, is Sevierville Road the only road that this piece of property is going to front on?
Yes.
So in essence, the twenty-five-foot flag is actually acting as a right-of-way. Is that correct?
I'm not sure what you mean.
Yes.
And what is, what are requirements for standard right-of-ways?
That would meet, that would meet it for an eighty-acre tract off Sevierville Road. The twenty-five-foot flag stem you see is allowable. It doesn't require a variance. The variance only applies to the other lot, since it's less than a hundred and fifty.
Our minimum for a common driveway is twenty-five feet. So they could put a common driveway in there and get further division in the back.
Okay.
Commissioner McClellan?
So they can only get four more lots off of that?
Technically, they could get five.
Five.
One with front and four with next to it.
Everybody clear and understand? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That is, an approval of the variance to a minimum lot size created by the flag lot and approval of the plat.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
John, I guess you're on.
Okay, I only got two items on staff report. First is December twenty-seventh, that's the day after the Christmas holidays, is the next meeting. We've had to reschedule because of Christmas holidays and so forth. And if, I'll be making a report at the end of the year on training. If you have any outstanding training certifications that you can provide to me, please provide those to me before the end of the year. If you have any hours that you need to get, then please try to get those between now and the end of the year. My office will be available during regular working hours to set you up if you need to. I think you've already got them. Yeah, I think I can set you up for training in my office to get your hours, so don't worry about it. Just, you've got to call me, though.
Hey.
I'm sorry, but that's the way it's set up.
John, I wouldn't mind having just a brief update. You know, we went through this with the onsite sewer systems, you know, several years ago. Just maybe a brief update of, you know, how that works with the, you know, municipality that licenses it and whatnot. Just a little ten-minute discussion, possibly.
Next meeting?
Yeah, or sometime coming up, hopefully.
I can't give you ten minutes tonight, other than...
No, 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 no. Maybe, maybe the next meeting.
Why don't we schedule that for the January meeting?
That'd be fine.
I have a feeling that we're going to be fighting to get a quota here on...
If we don't have any items on the agenda, we will call you and cancel the meeting in December. I'll call the chairman to confirm that, but we've only got one item that possibly is coming in right now, and they need to be in by the first of the month, right? To get on the agenda, and we'll be pretty hard-nosed about it in December. So if they're not on the, if they don't get into us by the first of the month, they're going to January. If they do get in by the first of the month, though, we do need to take care of anything that comes through properly.
But that's a good idea, Tom. I agree. So let's schedule that for January. Because I think we, because of the lack of development activity, we really haven't had much discussion on it for a while. And it might be worthwhile if you could get any touchy-feely from the Health Department as to if there's been any issues that have popped up.
We might be able to actually get in one of the service providers. The ones we called the Pickney Brothers have changed their name, and it's now Tennessee Wastewater, but they kind of led the way, and they came in several years ago, maybe ten years ago, and explained what they were doing and what the state allows them to do, and how it's set up, and how all the people that are under that sewer are protected, even if they might go out of business. So it'd be a good refresher. And we can count that as training, by the way.
Good.
Okay?
Commissioner McClellan?
I thought South Blount Utility was taking over management of some of those.
They were, they are, but not, it depends on the technology they put in the ground. They don't have people staffed and trained for this technology.
But they will manage them.
Not this one.
No. Not this one, okay.
They do other ones, yes, sir.
All right. We are adjourned, and have a Merry Christmas and happy holidays.